It is July 12th, Town of Reinbeck, regular Town Board meeting. Would everybody please hand me the floor. Let me consider the United States of America to the President, so we should stand as one nation, indivisible, in the ready for justice. I think we are... I'd like a motion for the approval of our prior minutes from our June 28th, 2021 regular Town Board meeting.
No.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is that Alan? Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'm going to go out of order a little bit here today because we have Hamlet at Reinbeck coming to give us their preliminary concept plan for our workforce housing project. Yes?
Yes. I will do it. Just trying to dial up Dan Martin. Dan is at Ham and I'm sort of dialing him up here. Oh, here we go.
Because I think there's a microphone for you here. I don't know if I need it. Can you hear him on the camera?
So far.
I'm fine. Hey, Dan. I'm here in front of the board and we're about to get started. Good evening. My name is Ken Carney. I'm here tonight with the project engineer, Andy Lern, CPL. On the phone is our partner, Dan Martin, from the New York City Housing Partnership. The Carney Group is a development company based in the Hudson Valley. Started in Dutchess County 30 years ago. We've developed over 1,500 units of mixed income housing throughout the Hudson Valley, mainly in the Hudson Valley, but now we're... we've reached out upstate. Dan cannot be here tonight, so he has to... dial him in. Hopefully, he can hear me.
Thank you for having me.
Great. What we're proposing here is to utilize the town's workforce housing Ovalt district. We're proposing 80 units in five buildings, combination of one bedrooms, two bedroom, three bedroom apartments. This model is similar to other models we're working on and other models we have worked on in the past. Andy can talk about the site specifics and I'm here to answer any specific questions you have. But basically, we develop mixed income housing. We seek funding, tax credits, a very competitive process. Both the Carneys and the New York City Housing Partnership have been very successful in securing funding over the years. We will develop it together. My son and I have our own construction company. We will build it, but more importantly, we will manage it. The Dutchess County Department of Planning, I've worked with for close to 30 years. I invite any of you to please call them and ask about our management style. They've always referred to us as hands-on managers. Even when we started from three units to 100 units to 200 units, 1,500 units, a good portion of every day in our office is to deal with management. I won't call management problems, just management. We do not utilize an outside management company. I think that's what has separated us from other companies. The demand for these type of units, workforce housing units, is tremendous and we look forward to starting the process here tonight and working all the way through gaining our approvals. So with that, Andy, did you go with the site plan?
Hi, Warren. Andy Lern with CPL. So just to kind of give you a little more information about the site, we're working on a project, a site with about 23 acres between Aster Drive and Reincliffe Road. What we're proposing is to have access from Aster, actually via Wells Manor Road. We have an easement off of Wells Manor to get to the town road. As Ken said, it would be key.
I'm sorry, you do have an easement from Wells Manor?
We have an easement for Wells Manor, yes. That's our primary access. So the site is really ideal for this actual, this type of layout because it is right on the border of the village.
But there's no egress onto Market Street where Reincliffe Road. It's only coming out on Aster Drive?
That's our proposal is currently is to just access from Aster Drive, yes. So, yeah, just to kind of get into the layout a little bit, we had initially proposed, and this is what we received in the initial submission, this layout where the road would come in from Wells Manor Road and would kind of follow the... this is actually the western boundary of the property of the site and then kind of wind its way up to the top where we'd have the building, four buildings at the top of the hill and then another one at the lower level. After looking at it a little more closely, our initial layout, this was to avoid disturbance of some steep slopes kind of through here, but after looking at it, it made a lot more sense to change that layout and actually go through a section of the steep slopes here, but overall, the grading and the disturbance is less. So we feel that that's kind of a worthwhile disturbance to consolidate the buildings. With this revised layout, we only have four buildings, but we're able to get all eight units in the four buildings instead of the previous layout. We are also showing some community amenities with a gazebo, some picnic tables and a barbecue area, also a community garden and a playground with this little hoop here where kind of makes it a little more walkable and more community friendly. That's pretty much the... We have had preliminary discussions with the village and the indications are that they do have capacity to serve the project. So we feel that it's really a pretty good fit for this site. You know, as far as the town code is concerned, I believe the next steps, if the board is willing, would be to refer this to the planning board and the workforce housing committee for their input.
Warren, can you speak a little bit about how the process works?
Yeah. The actual process is the applicant has to submit a preliminary concept plan. We should it to Section 125-64.4D3 of the code. And there are components of the plan that are set forth in the code. And then we would... the Town Board would take that and review it and determine whether to send it on to the planning board. So we're at the... the problem is that we need a... we need an engineer because we had a conflict with CPL in our work before. So in the process of retaining an engineer, we're discussing tonight, I think we're pretty close to making a decision. So I would want to take it upon myself to review the preliminary concept plan of the engineer and have... I would work with the engineer. So we're going to try to move it, you know, as quickly as possible as soon as we get an engineer onboard and... but we're not ready to review it and send it on to the planning board tonight.
Would it be possible to... would it be possible to start the secret process tonight?
I wouldn't want to do anything until I have the... until the engineer reviews it and tells me that everything that you submitted meets the requirements of our code. That's something that...
Warren, what input do we have on this project? What input do we, as the Town Board, come on this?
Well, it's a legislative act, so it requires a rezoning, so we have complete discretion. I mean, it can be... planning board, the Town Board can tell you tonight they want it, or it could be reviewed and then the Town Board can tell you that they don't want it, or the process can start. Anytime there's a process, we can...
So we can give any kind of input we want on this?
Yeah.
For us, every now and then.
Yeah. I mean, it's... when you... that's why it was designed in that way, through the Town Board, full powers to say there's a project that, you know what? It's not like a normal planning board application.
But we can give specific input on the project.
Oh, absolutely. That's part of your job. I just want...
Any comments from anyone here in the Town Board?
I just... what... how many units were... what was the unit count?
Eighty.
In the zone at 80, sort of max?
I mean, I have a couple of comments. Anybody else?
No. This is my third or fourth meeting on the project, so I don't have any questions at this stage.
I would like to see access to Market Street or Reincliffe Road. This is supposed to be walkable into the village and by sending people out to Wells Manor and to Aster, it's sort of is a rounded out way to get to the village.
You're talking about pedestrian access onto Franklin Street?
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian and bike access to our sidewalks, I think, is important. I don't see any outdoor, individual outdoor space for anybody, any patios, any balconies. I think that's important. I guess I had envisioned something a little bit more... I don't mean to be derogatory, imaginative. These just seem like fox-like today. And, you know, maybe different types of housing, maybe different sizes of buildings. And I guess I had envisioned something that would open it up to the community, whether a certain percentage of this is for artists or musicians or performing artists and there's communal space that would bring the community in. I'm looking for something a little bit more innovative than just... you know, we have a lot of residents who have expressed interest in supporting this project. I know there's member money available, 1,000 to 5,000 per unit to develop now. Dan was talking to me about kind of member money from the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You know, and maybe there's some way to close the gap in funding to do something a little bit more inclusive of the community.
If I may. The... this is a work in progress. As Andy stated, this is the second iteration. First iteration came about from a site wall and there's a ridge, a rock bridge running through and we were trying to work within that. As far as the community, the community garden here, we can do a community garden here. We're also going to look, depending on the grade over in this area as well, because of the area's rich history with farming and so forth. My son has reached out and there are groups, we've worked in Red Oak, we have very good groups in Red Oak, just donate store to the village there and to work with farmers there and here in the town to get them involved, to see if they would work with our tenants and teach them. As far as arts, we're very familiar, our urban model.
That's why I brought it up, because you did something in, was it... not Beacon?
Oh, we did it in Beacon, Poughkeepsie and Peekskill.
Yeah, I was really impressed with those. That's why I brought it up.
Thanks. It's more of an urban model, but I do have a question. The question is, there is a preference in the... New York State allows a preference in certain cases for artists. I'm not sure if, in this case, in a suburban setting, if they would allow it, but I'm going to inquire.
I mean, just spitballing because of what you did in...
Oh, I understand. Well, the one thing we did do in Peekskill that I did envision here, in Peekskill, what we did is we met with the local school district and we met with the principals and they introduced us to the local art teachers. And the students came in and actually decorated our... what we have, we have five stores, so we rented two stores here, two here. We left the middle store as our lobby, but if you walk into our lobby, there's all artwork from the local students and we did that. What we're going to do here, we're going to have a community room. And in the community room, there's going to be a separate room that's just for displaying. We're going to hope to do that on an ongoing basis. We're going to try. If it takes hold, I think it will, because what we have found in both Peekskill and Poughkeepsie and Beacon is that the artist initiatives that we've sponsored, if you will, to give it a kickstart, it's tech on. It develops a life of its own. So we are looking to do that. In regards to, like I mentioned, the community garden here, hopefully we'll do an additional one here. Point is very well taken about, you know, pedestrian access and bike access. I met with a representative of Dutchess County Department of Planning. They had similar comments as far as access there to try to connect, and the same thought, how do we connect a better connection?
Is it impossible to have car access to Market Street? It just seems like we're putting a lot of traffic out onto Aster, which is a very rural road.
I wouldn't say it's not impossible.
I know it's steep slope there and, you know, challenging.
Yeah.
That side and the walkway we're talking about between Reincliffe and... is that impossible?
Well, I mean, if this met... this came out on the north side of the lot, they're across the street from the sidewalk in front of the library, so that's...
And I understand, looking at this, and if you look at it on paper, that's where we are, you're looking at four boxes, but we have been, within the limitations of our business, within the... we do have some limitations, but within the limitations of our business, my son is quite creative and he works very closely with the architects. And they were the ones who came up with these urban models and they have continued to evolve our other models. So although it looks just like four boxes now, we're not a dono.
Okay, well, that's why I asked what input we have, because you've asked us to refer it to the planning board and I'm not clear if we're doing the front end imagining of this with you or they are. Warren?
Brendan imagined, do we do it? Do we do it and then we put it to the planning board and you wait? I just got a report.
Looking at our email on the engineer. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you. The term was imagined and do we do that and then send this to the planning board? Or should we...
No, no, actually, actually, it's not only the planning board. The concept plan, you know, the preliminary plan has to be improved, be in acceptable form to move the process along. But you're also going to be sending it to the workforce housing committee, the waterfront advisory committee, and Dutchess County planning for their input. So there's a number of components to the initial approval process. Everybody will have it.
I guess at what point is it not four boxes? At what point is there... before we refer it, how far ahead is it going to be?
If you're not happy with the project initially, I think it's probably better to work those things out before we get too far along with the process.
Can we have a workshop?
Before we start referring it out to the other agencies?
Should we have a workshop for this?
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to get an engineer onboard and then have a workshop with the engineer at the board and then make sure that what we have is least in final court show can be sent on to the other components. But yeah, you're going to need a workshop any time. It's fairly complex.
I mean, I think, you know, supportive of workforce housing, that we pass the law so we could go there.
It's also hard to say, just in engineering doctrine, what does that indicate?
Yes. What are we... what is it? Yeah, it's very vague.
What... what additional information would you be...
It's not something that... I think it could be part of this, it would be, what do the buildings look like? Like you're looking for a plan.
Well, yeah, that's the interesting part of this law is that normally, you know, it's basically a rezoning, right? And that's generally what it is. You kind of are getting kind of a general concept of what is going here, which is kind of what we've provided. It's normally like the planning board that gets into the kind of more detailed review, like you're saying. That's why I guess I wonder about the process, if it wouldn't be acceptable to make those referrals out sooner rather than later, right?
I think we're the board that's giving you the input on this, not the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, you have to be comfortable with what's being proposed before you get it to the planning board. All of the planning board will have, you know, certainly a very important participant aspect to it, but if you're not happy with the proposal, I think the time to rework it is now. I was thinking some building elevations would be helpful.
The initial submission happened. I haven't seen the cell taken. The initial submission happened.
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
It makes me...
We do have, yeah, we did bring the elevations. This is just kind of a general concept of what we would be proposing. I'm not the architect, so I can't give you too much detail on what it is, but, you know, it's with a fiber cement board at bat, fiber cement shakes, fiberglass shingles, composite trend boards, aluminum entry roofing, energy star windows.
So each... that would be one of the units?
They would all be similar to this, yeah.
So that is one of units, roughly?
Uh, yeah, roughly, a little, yeah.
What are the breakout of bedrooms in these?
So it's 80 units all you want?
Yes, it's 80 units all together and it should be 44 twos, 18 ones, 18 threes.
Was this part of the submission, the pact?
This elevation.
This process is new to me.
Us too.
Okay.
It's kind of a unique process.
Yes, okay. I worked with overlays before, but I understand the... this is the first time it's working through the process. So I'm trying to think when supervisor suggested maybe a workshop.
You could just call me Elizabeth. Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. Think maybe a workshop where we can get...
I think we need an engineer and I think, you know, we do need a workshop, you know, but I would like to see individual outdoor spaces, whether they're balconies or patios and I would like to see more connectivity to the village. And, you know, we need to have a public meeting where we can discuss this amongst ourselves to see what we're really looking for. That's just me, having looked at the preliminary draft and then your revision of it. And then something to bring the community in. I don't want this to be isolated from the rest of the community.
But just in terms of path, it seems like we have to establish what the moving pieces are so that everyone has a sense of how this moves forward, right?
I think we got that sense tonight. We have to get it to a place that we're happy with, flush it out, work with the Carneys and Andy and refer us to the other agencies.
Yes.
We, you know, just sort of have to get this out to the public and hear what people have to say about it, if they like it, if they don't like it, what, you know? This is a big deal for us. Sorry?
I was just thinking to get the... this, I mean, this is our first time working with this law too. So I was thinking of a way to get jump started, because I know you were probably under some time constraints on this. And I don't know when we're going to have the engineers fully onboard, but we'll assume that you could... and they have submitted a full application package that you think meets the requirements.
We don't have an updated application from you, I mean, with this new layout. We only got it...
Yeah, I only submitted the plan Friday. I don't really think that the rest of the application changes too much.
So I was thinking to get started on it, if you wanted to refer to the workforce housing committee, which I'm just checking, still in effect, we don't have to reform it, and to the concept, what did I say, the waterfront advisory committee?
I think it's too soon.
So that they can get started on this. I think it's premature to send it to county because we don't have the...
I think it's too soon to send it to anyone, Warren. We don't have a handle on this.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just a suggestion, just for you.
Just an alternative approach, just a... The other way would be get the engineer aboard and then schedule our workshop.
Yeah.
This is a big deal for us.
Make those the next two steps.
This is something that we really wanted for the town and, you know, we want it to be dynamic, or at least not hide it. We want it to be interesting and dynamic.
As a... as a way to get all that you put in as soon as possible, would the board be willing to consider a joint workshop?
Yeah.
I would rather have a workshop for the board before we bring in another agency, us and the planning board, without us having a grip on what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see whether the planning board... I think the planning board would be, yeah, the planning board, yeah. So we, the planning board or all those committees. Yeah, we can do it subject to the understanding that this has not been reviewed by our engineer.
Warren, I'll poll the board. I want a better handle on this before we refer it to anyone. Chauncey?
Yes, and we need the engineer.
Ed? We want some time with this before we involve the planning board and the workforce housing. We have to look at, is workforce housing even...
The workforce housing committee and the waterfront advisory...
And I want to get the public eyes on this so we can hear what the public's thinking, but...
No, it's a conservation advisory. Our waterfront housing committee is a conservation advisory committee? Do we have a separate waterfront?
Waterfront, we don't have a waterfront housing.
You don't? Waterfront, no, I'm sorry, advisory committee. Probably our CNAC is.
Yes.
Okay. Once we get to a place that the board is comfortable moving forward, the process, I've heard the process a couple of times, but I've never been to school. So I hear that it would be referred out. The planning board or the Town Board would be lead agency, possibly? It would be likely one of those two agencies would be the lead agency. And then goes to the planning board. The planning board, is there a dual process or the Town Board, once they refer it, they wait for it to come back? We can't take, the way I read the law, again, we haven't gotten through the process, is that it has to be referred out, we get their recommendations, and the Town Board makes its determination.
And then it goes back to the planning board.
Then it goes back to them. Once the Town Board passes it as a legislative act, goes to the planning board for site plan approval. Oh, I got it. I never figured that out while I was reading it ten times. I could be wrong. No, I was... I'll be wrong too. Okay. What I'd like to do, I know, heard some of the comments, decks, patios we'll look at, Elizabeth, we've used them on our senior units, I've had to use them on the larger units, just, and actually on some of our senior units, we're actually going away from them now, but...
Why?
Controlling, you know, what's out there on the decks aesthetically, controlling it and having to be, you know, policing the tenants and, you know, can't leave that out there, can't leave this out there. My office in, my office is on Route 6 of Baldwin Place and we built 150 units over there, right behind us, we built another 64 units, both non-age restricted and age restricted. And, you know, I look at the window and sometimes you see some of the other tents will complain, this one's leaving something on the deck and so forth and it...
Do you have rules about what's allowed out there?
Oh, of course, of course, but it's constant policing, it's rules are rules, right? And then it's, of course, the policing, but we'll look at that. I think you favor more buildings, smaller buildings.
I favor... this is way too... I favor, this is way too shoeboxing for me. I had imagined, you know, different heights and different, yeah, broken out, like more of a community work to it. But, you know, you don't have to, I think it's premature to change anything now because we haven't really weighed in. We don't even have an engineer. But certainly, you know, the access is important.
And the access, we can deal with. I'm just trying to make the next meeting and the next two meetings as productive as possible. I'm trying to hit, if we can look at that, that's not normal, you know, a small building, but we can look at that, but, or do we wait?
I think, I think we need some guidance, you know? Josh isn't the architect, so...
Yes, I'm figuring it all out. It's usually my job to figure it all out. I'll just figure it all out.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand, like, you know, from the process, I was a real new to this, but generally you come with, this is our basic plan, right? Like, it's, you work from the general to the specific. I understand the process. I think, though, that we're caught in a situation where we want as much eyes on things, and there's going to be a point at which you're like, that's not where we are in this process. So to me, I kind of feel like we as a board, you can come back to you with, here's the bucket list pieces that we really need to ascertain this. And I don't think it's full-blown architectural plans, I don't think it's any of those things. I think it's, here's the basic aesthetic goals, or here's the basic programmatic goals, and we want to see these pieces and these things. I think that would be, that would be the foundation of discussion, but that's my take.
That would be great.
Yeah. And the planning board would enforce it.
I don't even know about that. I'm just saying in general, given this process, for us to have constructive conversation to get somewhere, we can't send them back to draw and draw and draw and draw.
No. Yeah, that's why you saying redraw it seems premature.
Okay, so can we get some of those ideas in writing, and then we'll come back? Maybe if we can get them in writing, and then we'll come back, I'll get more of the team here.
I think we need our engineer, and we need to meet with our engineer, and then we'll come to you, you know, we'll have a workshop meeting where the public can come and you can...
I don't know exactly what form of things, but we need to respond somehow, is my take.
And we have no, we have no responses for it to you right now. I gave you off the cuff remarks that I had, and I don't, you know, everybody else here loves it, and it's...
Thank you, that was very helpful. It was helpful?
Tried.
Tried. But it's not, I think you acknowledge what I was trying to say.
Sure.
We, we, we're a little out of the box. We've been known to do that, and there are confines, right, but we have certain confines we have to stay within, and we push...
Understood.
The envelope with the plumbing sources and so forth, and that's what we're going to try to do here.
Appreciate that.
With the, you know, constraints, we have, I met both architects, and Andy, we met here, it started raining, we met over there, and we took a walk, took a walk through the village, and I said, listen, this, we have to incorporate, I want some features of the village. Now, that may not look like it, for now, but we will stay with it. The project we didn't begin, it was a very robust architectural review committee, it was just, it was a subcommittee of the planning board, and we were the first project. That was fun. And it was, you know, in looking at the building, what we, what we proposed did not look that interesting, but yet, you know, bragging a little bit, I think West End Losses is beautiful. You know, it came out, it's right to...
It is beautiful.
It's right to left the city hall on 9D, a walkout avenue. So I understand, more comments we get back, I under, I listen loud and clear, and I think we get a little more, and then I get these guys a little more, and we just keep working until we get something that is a little more acceptable to everybody. Is that fair? Any comments, any comments that we can get would be very helpful. All right?
Thank you. We got our engineer, get back to you.
All right, thanks much. Appreciate your time.
Good night, Dan.
Bye, Dan. Great. Before Warren goes, I just wanted to say that Alan and I had a talk with Victor Narke from Central Hudson along with Dan Mary from Our Generation, who was recommended to us by, or my big resident who was interested in community solar. Our community choice aggregate is not going through. Is that fair to say that?
Yeah.
We're abandoning it.
I think, I think we're waiting until, until the fall.
It's on hold for now.
To see if anything comes back.
Community choice aggregate is the local law we passed that would allow us to opt in all the residents for a, for a consortium buy of all of our power to come from renewable energy instead of the suppliers to Central Hudson. And the rates that have come back are eleven, ten to twelve percent higher than Central Hudson. So we couldn't opt into it. We're not going to opt our residents into something that's ten to twelve percent higher. So we'll see where the rates are in the fall. And in looking at that, we knew that to further our commitment to fossil fuel energy in the town, we needed to look at our, our community solar law, because we designed a community solar for microfarms, and there aren't developers looking to do that. And as we know from Victor at Central Hudson, there are only a very few points in the town where energy could be fed back into the grid. So we want to look at amending our community solar law so that we could get larger arrays in the areas where they can be cited.
Fair.
Yeah. Just wanted to say we'll be working on amending our community solar law.
Absolutely, not a problem.
Okay. Anything else for Warren before he goes?
I think you want to ask what anybody wants to say.
The public comment.
Oh, is there any public comment or any questions for Red Wing, for Warren, or things? Any questions about workforce housing?
Where exactly is it? Is it...
Right behind Wells Manor, between Wells Manor and...
The property that hosts the...
Yes, they bought the property that the hospital owns. And it's closer to Wells Manor than it is to Market Street. It's tucked like back up behind the top of the hill. Thanks, Warren. Okay. I'll go with the resolutions then. Resolution 2021-142, appointing a town special prosecutor. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move. Resolution 2021-143, hiring of a temporary part-time maintenance labor. May I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Ed, may I have a second? Was that a second whisper?
Second, I'm sorry.
Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Resolution 2021-144, request for ARPA, America Rescue Plan funds. May I have a motion? I'll make the motion. May I have a second? Thanks, Ed. Rhinebeck is entitled to over $500,000 of ARPA funds, and they have a couple of years to figure out how to capture them, besides loss of revenue.
But it's up to, at what point that is the number or the number of...
Up to that.
Up to that.
$536,270, and the village has another chunk.
And that's mainly driven to the extra expenses related to the family?
It's also, it's also sort of stimulus money, you know, is there something we could do with it that would help us if something out, like, can we renovate our space so that people are more spread out? What revenues did we use? There are three different areas, and we have to look at everything. We have a couple of years to tackle it. Something that we're working on with the county supervisors and mayor's association, and getting guidelines from the office of the state comptroller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Make a motion for resolution 2021-145, preliminary counts payable abstracts, thirty-eight checks totaling $50,430.60. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any new business before the board?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I have a request for quotations for the maintenance of the solar panels on the four town buildings and Village Hall. Village Hall has solar panels on it. We have four buildings, the pool, the highway garage, the transfer station, and this building. And what we're looking to do is jointly, between the village and town, get quotations for maintaining those panels. They haven't really been maintained very much in the past, so it's basically asking for bids. And the resolution I'm proposing is that we authorize the supervisor to publish the RFP, subject to the approval of the town attorney.
The clerks?
Yeah, the clerks. Okay. Here's, I only have one copy, I apologize.
Are you motioning this to the floor?
So I'm motioning this, yes, I'm moving that we approve this resolution to authorize the clerk to publish the RFP, subject to the approval of the town attorney.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Or any, this is a joint...
Yeah, the split of the, of the cost will be proportional to the expenses that were occurring, and it's hard to tell how they're going to price it, so they're probably going to price it by square footage of...
Why is this a good thing for us to do? Is it money-saving?
Yeah, well, it'll be one more, you know, basically it'll have five instead of four.
What is the meaning? Cleaning is...
Monitoring the systems, looking at low performance, and fixing it.
Do these things have a twilight moment, at some point?
In some cases, they wear out, cleaning them.
But they may be a newer, greater, more efficient thing as well?
Yeah, right, exactly.
So is that kind of wrapped up in it?
Yeah, it's all, it's the preparing quarterly reports about the output. Here, thanks. And I'll give you this one.
Does it also look at advising us as to whether or not we need to replace them?
Yeah, it's identifying loss issues and providing plans to investigate and resolve issues. If there are any issues, document, you know, basically it's, it's a whole list of activities that are organized.
We have part of this to take, right, like we're just adding.
We haven't done anything. I mean, we've had these panels up for, literally for years, and there's never been, there's never been anything done to them.
Well, that's not true. We've had maintenance done.
Yeah, problems, problems, we know. There isn't like preventative, it's...
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, it passes unanimously.
So I have another two business. This one I have, so the current fee structure for the, for season passes at the pool only has one option, which is a hundred dollars a person for residents to use the pool. In the past, the pool has had a family rate, two twenty-five for residents, and we'll have a resolution to reinstate that. So, it actually came about because of one of the residents who has, has a family of six.
Are you making, motioning this to the floor?
Yes, I am. Moving that we pass this resolution.
May I have a second?
A second.
So you know, we're subsidizing the pool heavily this year, and the tenants will weigh down.
Yeah, well, yes, I'm aware of that. But, you know, the question is, you want to have a family spend $600 on a pool bet?
What is this number based on if an individual is a hundred?
And if they have, if you have a couple of four kids, it's $600.
Right, so how did you get to two twenty-five?
That's what it was before.
And what was an individual before?
Hundred. So we kept, we kept the rates from two years ago, which was the last time the pool was open to everyone, and I have the old rates here. But the idea was, in 2019, it was a hundred dollars for an individual, two twenty-five for a family, fifty for a senior, which we don't have now.
But yes, we do.
No, right now it's a hundred dollars a person, period, and...
I just went over it with Carrie today.
What's on the website is just a hundred dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it's fifty, fifty dollars. There it is. I'm sorry, I missed that. So, yeah, so two twenty-five. We don't have, we don't have non-resident fees.
Only a day's house.
Only day's house.
We have non-resident fees, none.
But not...
Season pass, right. I think, you know, we didn't know what we were doing with the pool. We got such late notice that we couldn't even open, and it's heavily subsidized.
Yeah, that's true.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thanks.
Any other new business?
Okay. Just a quick update on the fencing of the brick block.
Is this, is this a motion? Is this, is this new business or a discussion? Do you need a resolution?
No.
Any other new business before the board? Any other discussion items?
Anyway, the old fencing, within the next two weeks, we'll be taking it down, basketball tennis courts, and we'll be starting new fencing for the Locusts, possibly to complete the building of the Locusts, and new fencing up.
Great.
Great.
Thank you to Josh.
It'll be black too, so.
Josh was a big help on this.
And the black fly mitigation.
Yes, that's taken care of too.
Yeah, bugs out.
Radar, that's radar.
Another thing, Carrie contacted me about swim lessons. Are we...
I got an email. The question is, are we going to allow people that are not part of our staff to provide swim lessons?
We have no policy. I don't know, is that something that the rep committee wants to make a policy on?
Freelancers?
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's a mission with the pool usage, so I think someone should look at it.
I mean, if two people come to the pool, and one of them's an instructor, and one of them's a kid, being instructed, we don't really know what's happening.
That's fine, but, you know, I couldn't answer the question because we don't have a policy. There was a question about our town email, everything to the town board going to the clerks, so I wanted to discuss that. Does anybody have any?
Well, I'm the one who raised the question because until, I guess, just this week or late last week, I didn't realize that email communication is among members of the town board in any place other than members of the town board. So I raised the question whether it's wise to have that happen, even though it's the town clerks' office.
Yeah, I'm fine with changing it to just us, and we can forward whatever we want to the town clerks.
Yeah, that's my suggestion.
By the way, I got a call.
Oh, Joe.
You okay with it?
Let's work.
They're also changing, you got, supposedly got hacked.
No, it's, it's not hacked. It's someone is phishing.
Right.
So they make up an email address, and then they send it us with the intent, and it looks like it's from Elizabeth, but if you look at the address, it's obviously not.
Somebody else.
So I don't think, I had called PSNA, remember, and they said, the only thing you can do is block that email account, and that's unlikely they have any information on here. But I was very close to buying $500 with a device in the car from Elizabeth. I literally was.
Your kid.
No, no, no. And then they said, just remember to scratch the backs, and send us pictures of all of it. I was like, this can't be, this can't be...
Even she's not that stupid, right?
Yes.
I'm surprised you got that forward.
It did, it had an air of official... It did, it had an air of officialness to it, I have to say.
It's because I always email you requests like that.
She said you were busy, can you go back?
Just email me, I'm going to meet you on Sunday. I didn't think so. The, we're moving to two-factor authentication with the law.
They already did it. Today, most of us.
So that's, I might have to change my password to get my email.
I'm just looking here, so we are going to change our emails to just us, and then, John, will you take care of that? I'd like to make a motion to go, is there any, oh, there is something else. The cemetery award notification.
Oh, right.
Okay, they're not here, so we've got an award to do all of the, digitize all of the information from the cemetery, so we'll be doing that. I thought Suzanne was coming. Any other issues before the board, questions?
No, everyone.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll be back, we will not be taking any action, so we could say goodnight to everybody now and come back and adjourn our evening. Thank you.